Yeah. Good evening. Okay. We're gonna start with our delegations, then we're gonna have a moment of silence. Mary Lou Ormick, mother of Mike Orbin, retired San Walker Highway Supervisor. Linda Cox, sister of Douglas Moore, B W Steel Labor. Israel and all the victims. And Gillis, Billy Sten, May, Foni Alley, Agash, and Vindas.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the parliament, which stands one nation.
Thank you. Welcome. Great to see all these people are here tonight. First, we're gonna start with a public hearing on the benefit assessment role for this year 2024.
State President Public Hearing, we go by the town hall in town hall. The sixth, what that was going to come out with. The seventh, the twenty ninth, the ninety nine town hall, ninety nine town yard, in town year. With respect to the proposed 2024 benefit assessment, we expect that company will return. Any resident in San Walker, the town will be considering the proposed rate increase at such public hearing. Uh, this is the benefit assessment for now, before review. At Walsho Town Hall, my name is Town Dr. Okay. Town Hall from every, I've been here with one assessment person, just as long as anyone requiring special assistance. And or reasonable accommodation should come after the ten forty, by order of the town board, to also please request.
Public hearing notice was published and posted in accordance with town code and state law.
Thank you. So the benefit assessment fee, there's no increase in any of the benefit assessments fee for all the districts. Listed on the postcard and they were sent out. This is the sixth year with no increase, especially districts on lower side, water district. Casulated Water District number one, Gason Sewer District, Old Town Lighting District. Old Town Drainage District, Town Law two hundred, North Gallery Road. Um, the total water sewer benefits set within increased revenue. To new construction and new project, which we see seal certificate of occupancy. And the water, there was an increase, forty thousand five hundred thirty to be fifty cents. The sewer, there was an increase of forty eight thousand six hundred fifty six and forty cents. Anyone in the audience want to speak on the benefit assessment fee? There were all the ones who said. Don't. Court. Mountain. Nope. Johnson. Okay. Make a motion to close the public hearing. Sorry. Hold it there, then.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, public hearing.
Please state, number seven, public hearing, we help at the town, town hall, twenty six, two thousand and twenty three, and seven twenty five P M. At Walsho Town Hall, ninety nine tower, the town year, with respect to those changes. In the regional water and sewer infrastructure property, the land and outside the batteries of the town. Water and sewer districts for the calendar year twenty twenty four is followed. Water in district, the third range, two dollars and ninety five cents per thousand. The proposal rate is three dollars per thousand. That's a one point six eight percent increase. Water out of district is five dollars and ninety cents per thousand. The proposal is six dollars per thousand, and that's causal one point six eight percent increase. Sewer in district is three dollars and fifteen cents per thousand. The proposal rate is twenty cents per thousand, and that's an increase of one point five seven percent. Sewer out of district is six dollars and thirty cents per thousand. Proposal is six dollars and forty cents per thousand. And that is also an increase of one point five seven percent. Construction temperature in water is twenty dollars per thousand per million. Any resident in San Walker was entitled to be heard returning the proposal rate increase at such public hearing. The town hall from every, I'm sure the hearing is accessible, the first of the disciplines. Anyone requiring special assistance and or reasonable accommodation, contact us. By order of the town, when the town.
And the notice for this public hearing was posted and published in accordance with town code and state law.
This increase is very minimal. It allows us to continue our water and sewer master plans from and build redundancy in our system. Even with this slight increase, we would still have the lowest water sewer rates out to valley. By comparison, in twenty twenty three, combined water and sewer rates within the city of Middletown. It's seventeen dollars thirty one cents per thousand gallons. The town of Walsho combined rate is six dollars twenty cents per thousand gallon. Anyone on Zoom who wants to. Anyone in the audience?
Sure. Yeah, so supervisor said it well. We still have the lowest water sewer rates around. I think the uh. As it goes, that if we did, if we raised our rates by this amount every year for the next twenty years. And the city of Middletown held steady. We'd still be less than that. So we've got a good thing going as far as this goes, and we're also putting money aside. Uh, recognizing that our water and sewer infrastructure will one day need to be addressed. So no matter when that is, twenty years from now, there should be, for whoever's sitting up here. Um, a nice chunk of money set aside to get some of that work done and and get them started. So we're looking into the future as well, and we're able to keep our rates low, so.
Uh, not much to add to that, so. Yeah, if we, as Councilman Montal, points stated, if we were to increase at the same rate for the next ten year. We would still be lower than what Middletown is today. Um, and obviously, the increase is is forward in planning. Uh, we, a while ago, a few years back, we created a master plan for improvements within our sewer and water districts. And projects that we can anticipate that may cost a chunk of money. So this helps reserve that money, this helps put money into the bank for those times that we need it. And um, it it's good management. Thank you.
That's in my. I have nothing. Come to the gentleman.
Thank you, supervisor, so um, quickly, you just sort of mentioned that the supervisor, that our rates are basically about one third of Middletown. Um, one third is a huge number, you know, they're almost eighteen dollars or six. So I think that's great, and you heard the other councilman mention that we've been doing planning, not only like at our current expected needs, but even for the future growth. Uh, looking at issues that need to be addressed to the aging infrastructure, and we're always like trying to. Address them ahead of time before they become a problem, um, so we're in a pretty good spot now, and with our. Budgeting that we've been doing, um, we'll stay that way for the future, so. Um, you can look forward to the services from Mark Hill Board and Sewer, thank you.
You're. Me and I will come up and make the motion to close the public meeting. Back in. Second. No, don't call it a turn. Someone second.
First back, sorry.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Right now.
Notice is hereby given that the tenant question, town hall, this year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty four, that completed in flying the office. At ninety nine tower garage, we'll send you one place available, despite. We seek further notice of the permanent project case proposed. Salaries for local officials, supervisor, one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred eighty one dollars and seventy eight cents, deputy supervisor. Second deputy supervisor, nineteen thousand eight six six seven twenty nine. Town clerk, sixteen, eighteen, fifty, town clerk, seventy two thousand two hundred and twenty five. Receiver of tax, twenty nine thousand eight hundred and nineteen thirteen. Town justices, hundred nine thousand three hundred and twenty one. District running, the public hearing, we help with the town of Walsho. Over twenty six, seven, five, ten. No consideration, commander, but the visitor year. Any resident in San Walker, for considering preliminary questions, public hearing, copy, to review. At Walsho Town Hall, the town will make every effort to assure the hearing is accessible before any disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and or reasonable accommodation should put it up yourself, but. By order of the town board, ten four, please, best.
And the notice was posted, all required places, and published in accordance with town code and state law, thank you. Take this one.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah. Hit the button.
All right, all right. All right, so. I'm George Lannan, supervisor, is that by?
All right. Well, here and you.
Oh. Good deal. Let me start. So the first slide, as you can see here. This shows how my budget would affect the tax rate for twenty twenty four. My budgets, I spent fifty six thousand dollars under the tax cap, which will result in an increase of about thirty four to forty five dollars a year, that tax name.
Yes, you go.
Next. Thank you. Um, as you can see here, uh, great job by our assessors department. As uh, we uh, uh, taxable assessed value of property has increased. Um, and before, we will have um, some projects that will be coming out to the Tatro, the Dino Rex Warehouse. Uh, uh, feral apartments, Adams, here at Eagle Farms, Westchester Hills, and Amelia Court Homes. These um, projects have a threshold that'll be on our tax roll for value. Next. Of course, on. The water sewer rate changes, we went over that during. Uh, the public hearing. Next. So you can see, um, due to the great job by Michelle Baker, now public works. Um, has done a great job of writing and administrating these grants. We've done a lot of work in the town with grants. Um, we've worked with our real estate partnership, uh, Assemblywoman Gunther, um, State Senator Schufus. And we got approximately one million dollars in grant money, and that's gonna help create some of the projects that we have going. Next. Opera money, so the town did receive some opera money. Um, back in, I believe, with twenty one, and these are some of the projects that we've worked on. We did essential essential workers compensation, did the H V C and the community center. We purchased some property, I want to kill. We put some money to our tourism, which I think is great. We bought some software to uh, adding zoning and the town clerk due to minutes. And we also um, invested in a drone for the business department, and also a kennel for. Any times A C O, police officers get a a dog or a cat, and we can't take them. To one of the um, main society of that's alive, um, it wasn't good to give the animals in the back, so. We decided to invest the money to purchase a kennel that's planning control for the animals. And we also are going to use four hundred and fifty five thousand in this year's budget to purchase a truck, a computer. Computer equipment and P V. Next. As you can see, the town of Walsho has maintained its double A rating. Um, this is good in case you need to go out and bond and borrow money, so it's good to see that town of Walsho is doing great. New positions, so it's always good, you know, safety is a big concern with all the residents. And last year's budget, we added two, we police officers, this year's budget, we added two more. And clerk, because it's important, but um, how busy the town is becoming, we need to address, we need to take. And with the new uh, police report, um, there's a lot of work that's done in the back once an arrest is made, so we need a new clerk over there. The building department, we're gonna be adding uh, another clerk, again, the town is busy, development busy. They need the help, so we need to buy uh, the help of building. Same thing with the water sewer, very busy, the new development area where there's water sewer. And we're adding a clerk there, then an assessor, um, adding a clerk that's gonna help assess the planning and zoning. One of the things that we've done, twenty twenty three, is we reorganized the county department. Um, we split up our human resource and payroll, we have a payroll clerk and a human resource vendor, and we added two account clerks. So that um, with the work is being done there, we'll be able to function the right direction. One of the things we did also is. Um, let's give that a bold set base, um, and we, I, I said, because we had a lot of roles in town. They need to be paid this year, uh, men have been.
Yeah.
Thought about that. Um, so it's important to maintain our roles, um, as best as possible. We'll be looking to acquire another pivot this year. We did acquire a paper a couple of years ago, which has helped our B W do our own P V. So we're looking to acquire another paper who's coming here. See, all our, our work is being done by our B W, great job. Next. So everyone is aware of the speed hunt program we started a couple of months ago, we're looking to increase that next year around town, um. It's a good program. Because it helps with the speeding, which is one of the main concerns of town of Walsho residents. We also are looking to store a new speedway part. We, with the help of state, we were able to purchase five. And purchase five more, and we're looking to install them around the town, because speeding is. I've been out, speeding is a main concern in the town. Yes. Our parks, so you know, we always say, you know, what do we have for our use? Now, so one of the things is, we gotta increase our parks, um, whether it's the playground, whether it's uh. The play areas, and we gotta make it inclusive for everyone. Some of the things we're looking to do is increase our um, equipment to make it um, available for. Or not just regular new kids where disabilities should be able to use our parks, so we're looking to do that. We have our new dog park that's open, anyone's been out, haven't been out there, please do. Um, it's two separate parks, one for small dogs, one for big dogs. Ones where we got grant from Assemblywoman Gunther to create these people walkways. And we're gonna look to, um, like everything else, you build it, and there needs to be improvement. You try and do it, and one of the things that I think everyone from ballplayers is that maybe really to restore fencing and beaching in the courts. So we're looking to do that in the next year. Dollar bus, so we also got some grant money to build the dollar bus garage. And also with the help, with uh, partnerships with the county and with Walsho, we're looking to get four new buses in twenty twenty four. Um, once we get these buses, and we get them, because a lot of times, we order them, and because of uh, supply issues, we might not get them. I'm looking to increase the dollar bus program, and I think it's a great program that we have here in town, and if we can increase it, we will do it. Next. And working with the language district, um, school district, and uh, the superintendent Brian Dunn. We were able to, for the first time, have a full-time S R O at the elementary school. Um, we have our timers, and it's good to have, I know I'm today at full time. We're gonna be there all the time of working, um, with the news and my machine. That's, I I think it's important that we invest in our youth. And I increased the funding for the youth programming, youth college, age junior police academy. I think the junior police academy, we ordered that last year, we increased it again this year. My intention is to increase again, give them funding, so they can do what they gotta do for you. If anyone knows about the Junior Police Academy, it is great program. When my son was twelve years old, eleven, twelve, he went through San Walsho, this guy. So when I found out that it just wasn't, we weren't doing it, first thing I said, let's do it, let's do it. So now, I think it's important for us to buy funding for it, and encourage, increase the number of weeks, but it is a great program. I see, when I go to the graduations, I see the young men and women there, and they are a lot of repeaters, so it's a good thing to have. This is something that's been, you know, we live in a very diverse community. So I included in my budget these events, they showcase. So I included in my budget these events, they showcase our diversity. Um, and we're gonna keep doing it. We're going to keep looking to add more events because our community in the Town of Walkville has changed and it wasn't years ago. And we all gotta live together, work together, so we're gonna have these programs. Um, we had them last year, but now they're in the, in the budget and funded. Last but not least, LED signs. I'm looking to get LED signs in front of Town Hall and by the Vietnam Valley Memorial Park because I think we need to, you know, we, we all talk about communication, and we do have this program to notify people of things that are happening. So we, we haven't been good at communicating without that for this. So maybe this is the first step in the right direction to convert these LED signs in Town Hall and on the other side of town where we can give information to our residents and they can know the events, things that are going on in the Town of Walkville. So yesterday, um, I've had a couple of work sessions. The town board approved these changes to my budget. Next. Next. These, these changes, although they're a month, the taxpayer hasn't yet got the tax bill. Now a resident is gonna pay anywhere from eight to fifty-three dollars per year. I'd like to thank the town board for working collectively with myself to create this new budget and the changes. We got now under the tax cap at two hundred and fifty-six dollars, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. We addressed the concerns, we addressed public safety, and we are investing back into the Town of Walkville community. Thank you. Got it. And start off, I'll be hearing. We'll start with the audience.
Yeah, yeah. It's like eight o'clock.
We're about to hit eight o'clock supervisor. What, oh, it's about to be eight o'clock. About to hit eight o'clock.
We're gonna lose the internet at eight, but there's something that's been going on. We tried so much trying to fix this, and unfortunately, we have not been able on the spectrum, trying to resolve it, they can't find it. It's not the.
You go, Ron.
You're good? Okay, I'll continue. Uh, as I said, you delivered for the taxpayers of Town of Walkville. We all know there's runaway inflation. I was in ShopRite the other day, and two eleven, I saw on sale two bags of chips for nine dollars. Unbelievable, and I thought that's on sale, but you kept this tax as stable. You maintained the police force, which I know the people in the Town of Walkville wanna be safe, where others have wanted to cut, we see in this country, it's just a shame. You maintain that, you're gonna add that. Your water and sewer rates, as you clearly pointed out tonight, are a third of what they are in Middletown. You've addressed the speeding problems. Uh, the Town of Walkville's a great place. And I also hope, I wanna add, that sales tax revenues are up, so hopefully there's a little extra boost there from the county for the Town of Walkville as well. So I commend you on a solid budget, and thank you for delivering the taxpayers the time. Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you, Ron.
Audience.
Yeah, and that I wanted to give each one of you, and then I'll talk about it.
Thank you. It's about the budget.
Concerning a topic about the funding for different cultural and civic events. One of the things that, one of the things that George mentioned was the budget funding.
I'm sorry, sir, could you give me more for the record, please? Your name, please, sir?
I'm sorry, Bruce Bergman from Circleville.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, you have a copy?
He was commenting about, uh, funding for different cultural things, and one of the things that I wanted to mention was the funding for the Art Center for Harold Carter. There seems to be a misunderstanding that Harold brought up a lawsuit against the town that's gonna sue the town. That's absolutely false. There is no lawsuit, there's no court hearing pending. What I would like to read is an article that I wrote in the Epoch Times newspaper. Approximately two and a half years ago, the town board of the Town of Walkville signed a contract to build an art museum for Mr. Harold Carter on his property located on Vine Durango Road. Harold donated his entire twenty-acre property free of charge, including his historic fourteen-room Portland house that was built in seventeen ninety-two. The contract stated that Harold can remain in his home for the rest of his life with the provision that the Town of Walkville maintain the entire property. The contract stated that the Town of Walkville is to design and build an art museum on Harold's property to be completed within a year and a half. That contract was actually signed on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Harold has been a dedicated resident and supporter of the Town of Walkville for sixty-two years and founded the Town of Walkville Historic Association fifteen years ago. He's an award-winning international motivational speaker, presenting seminars to executives and groups, including the Town of Walkville. He is also an exceptional artist and created a thousand framed paintings along with numerous scrap wood sculptures and rock art paintings located throughout his property. As of May twenty twenty-three, the Town of Walkville has not progressed on the design and construction of the art museum. Harold has also created a design to turn his entire twenty-acre property into a Town of Walkville Cultural Center unlike anything that has ever been built in the area. It would benefit all age groups, provide a much-needed artistic and family-oriented adventure for all to experience and enjoy. Again, as of May twenty-third, the town board has refused to even look at Harold's imaginative design for the cultural center. My goal is just to encourage the Town of Walkville to fulfill their obligations to Harold Carter to build the art museum. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Thank you, Mr. Bergman.
Chris says a note to that, sir. We are, and I am working with Mr. Carter's attorney, trying to work through some issues, and we have made some progress and may expect the progress to continue. Thank you. If you will.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Anyone in the audience?
Good evening, Minister Joe Wilkins, Wilkins Ventures International. Uh, I wanted to thank the town for their generous donation of the I N A C C of Lowe's, and we were able to identify families that were in need of these. I think we had, um, inserts for the, uh, stoves, inserts for fireplaces, ceiling fans, microwaves, things like that, ladders, and these were, I think, were not able to purchase themselves. And because of your generosity, they now have these company in the home, and they want me to come and express a great gratitude to you. And I also want to personally want to give you all Godspeed on November seventh, and I'd like to you all.
Anyone in the room? Audience.
Good evening, uh, Councilman and Supervisor, my name's Connor Wilson. I am the owner of Smoker Break Barbecue, located in, um, during your term, I know you guys redid the food truck laws, um, and I want to, you know, express my thanks to you guys.
This is, I guess, about the right time.
Oh, not the right time.
We do appreciate it.
I'll be back.
Anybody else on Zoom? One thing I wanna add, and I think in my presentation, was that, um, again, with our partners in the state, uh, Senator Goldman Gutter and Senator Sufis, we were able to get our hotel tax, um, renewed for two more years. And we are getting a new hotel possibly next June, July, which is gonna help our hotel tax. Anybody else for the budget? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we're gonna start with my board, Councilman Ray.
Um, so according to the State Comptroller's Office and the wonderful Town Law Handbook, uh, when reviewing the budget, the board should have the following information. List of what is actually in the budget, the adds and subtractions, um, when, in other words, what has been purchased, employees, all that kind of stuff. Um, this is the first time I'm seeing any of this information tonight, so for, I wish I had a bit of writing, um, as well, or detail-oriented version of that. Uh, two projections, uh, of both fund balance and cash. Three, capital plan, capital activities. Four, wage and salary schedules, including benefits and comparative year-over-year analysis, debt service and other debt schedules, and actual results from operations, uh, trial balances for year end and current year. Um, so none of this information has been provided yet, uh, even though Deputy Supervisor Coin had promised that I would have all this information uh, in time, uh, to review prior to us voting on it. Um, now, yesterday, uh, I did find out why some of this information has not been provided. I had the opportunity to sit down with O'Connor Davies, the town's outside auditors, uh, who started fieldwork on Monday for the twenty twenty-two budget. Um, and sitting down with them, they informed me that the twenty twenty-one books had not actually been closed and that the opening balances for twenty twenty-two did not match the authoritative closing balances for twenty twenty-one. In addition, the balance sheet doesn't actually balance, um, that's concerning, and which means that the town doesn't have a workable trial balance at the moment. At least this is what O'Connor Davies was telling me. So, uh, can you realistically do a budget based on inaccurate numbers? Um, and you really can't. And this leads to two questions. Who is overseeing the finances of the town? And why wasn't the board provided with all the information to make an informed decision, including that this information, uh, wasn't entirely accurate? Um, again, financial information, uh, should be public, it should be accessible, and it should be provided to all board members. So, uh, unfortunately, I do not have an opportunity at this time to render an opinion on budget.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Supervisor. Um, so going through this budget, it's, uh, pretty standard that you take the previous year's budgets um, because of a lot of those items that have to stay, because that's how the town operates. And if anybody that owns a home and, you know, runs finances for their home realizes since the pandemic, the cost to do business has exploded. It is exponentially higher than it was to do anything from groceries, the fuel, the heating oil, uh, the electric for your home. All that stuff is way higher than it ever, in my life, as it went up as fast as it has. Um, I know there was a huge inflation in the eighties, but I don't think it even touched where we're going so far. Um, and then this budget, still under the tax cap, we're talking about a cost, even if you got a new house of two dollars a month, right? Fifty cents a week is what the budget's gonna go up for you. And it still maintains the town, and it runs everything just like it did. Adding staff, police officers, to make things safe. Full-time SRO in the school district, which is much needed today, as you all know. Need to keep our children safe, very important. Um, they put staff in all the departments that are behind and understaffed, and the people are working extremely hard to get things done that do generate money and move projects forward in town. Um, so it did all that at the cost of fifty cents a week to the taxpayer. So, you know, I think this is pretty well represented. Um, things are covered, and, you know, I will be voting yes for this budget when the time comes. Thank you.
Councilman Coin?
Yeah, um, I agree with a lot of what Eric just said, uh, you know, when everything around us, in your words, exploding, right? Councilman Johnson, everything around us, gas, food, everything. I mean, my wife goes to the store, comes home with seven bags of, of groceries and it's three hundred bucks, right? You know, our, our dollar just isn't going as far as it used to. There are certain things in our budget that are out of our control, that are constants. Payroll, we need employees, we need employees to do the, do the work. They need to be paid. For this, to go up, this budget to go up, anywhere between eight and twenty-four dollars a month, depending on the assessed value of your home, is fantastic. Yeah, what did I say? A month? I apologize. For, for an entire year, eight dollars to twenty-four dollars. I take my two boys to McDonald's, I'm spending more than twenty-four dollars once, just to sit down and have a burger and fries. You know, think about that. I think it's, I think it's a responsible budget. It's conservative on the anticipated revenues, which legislator Sassy mentioned that the sales tax revenue might come in higher than anticipated. That's always a plus. More is better than less. Um, again, it's, it's responsible, it's fiscally conservative, and yeah, when the time comes, I'm, I'm a definite yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bondi.
Thank you, Supervisor. So, right, I'll start with the, um, last statement from, one of the last statements to the council, Coin. It's a conservative budget. You don't spend more you have, you don't spend more than you have. So, um, what I mean by that is, is we could raise the numbers as to what the anticipated revenue would be, but we did not. We went on a conservative, this way if we get more, it's great. It's, it enables us the ability to give back to the taxpayer. How do we give back? By keeping your taxes stable, by making sure that you're not taxed out of your home, you're not taxed out of your your residence that you worked so hard for. Um the the other truth is, is that we have to run a town. It's not a business, and the only way the town runs is by taxes and collecting those taxes. And so it's our responsibility to keep that as stable as possible. Um yeah. Eight dollars and sixty-four cents to twenty-three dollars and four cents a year, depending on the size of your home and the assessed value of your home. Uh along with that is is certain things in there. We mentioned the SRO officer. We now have a full-time SRO officer in our school. It's it's a devastation that way, you would have to talk in those terms to protect our kids, to protect our home, our our schools. But we do, it it's the reality of today. But that, that SRO officer is being paid by the school. It's those costs and everything else is, will be paid by the school, so it's not on the taxpayer. Um in working with with supervisors in our work sessions, um and in working with with the comptroller's office and their staff is here, thank you Cheryl, um thank you Lauren, uh we are able to identify the monies that the state has provided us through ARCA, which was provided during during the pandemic and take those big one-time projects or big one-time purchases, let's say, for example, a truck, a paving truck. And we're able to pay for that. Now, you don't want to use ARCA money for something that's gonna be constantly paid for. But that money can now be used to purchase those big items and still keep the cost of of this budget down, and we did that, and we supervisor did a fantastic job doing that. I think it's it's a responsible budget. I think it 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 checks all the items that we need to continue our quality of life within the town. The town is growing, the town is growing in 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 a very fast pace now that everything is done. But look at our growth, look at Adam's Ferry of Ronald, that's fantastic. We have Aspire, another great restaurant. We have um in this budget, our facilities, our parks have been improved. And how how have they been improved? Not only for kids to go there, but we're purchasing handicap playable equipment for all the kids, or parents that have these these kids with special needs can now come to our parks and enjoy that. So it's a good thing there. The new hotels, obviously, um the new hotels is 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 revenue for the town. Uh whoever comes in pays five percent, but you think about, they're paying five percent to to the town, but it's not you guys, it's not you residents that are paying. The people that come to visit for different events in the town, for the soccer tournaments in the town, for the football tournaments in the town. Our bond rating, that just doesn't happen. They the the bond people don't just give that away. And so they look at our budgets and they look at our fund balance and they look how we're spending money and taking money in, and they make these hard decisions, and we were able to to keep that bond rating. What does that mean? If and when we do have to borrow money, we have an excellent credit rating. And so we're able to borrow that money at the lowest possible interest rate. And we're able to shop for those. So that's what that bond rating does for us. And I've touched on the parks, the new facility at Stevens Avenue where it it was a a darkened place because there was basketball hoops, there was basketball hoop issue, but it's pickleball. Pickleball is the latest thing. I hear everybody's playing it. As soon as my arm gets better, I'm gonna try it. So um I think it's 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 a budget that directs us in the right place, in the right direction, it's a positive. And we continue to grow in a positive in the town, thanks to the budget. So thank you supervisor, thank you Cheryl and Lauren again, and everyone else. And you as as last thought there, Councilman Coin touched on, you know, we have set things that within this budget, we can't negotiate, we can't pay for it. We're in the municipality, we're not we have contract negotiation with our employees, and those contracts have to be um provided for and supported, so those are never negotiated in the budget. We know what that cost is going to be, and we add that. So those are fixed costs that we can identify. Outside of that, thank you for listening, folks. Appreciate it.
Can I add something about that? Before you go, thank you. Um Councilor Allen to bring up the ARCA money. And I just want to explain the move we made last night was a great move, you know. We get this ARCA money because of COVID, it came from the federal government down at state, state duties, and after municipal municipalities. Typically, in our budgets, we'll use some fund balance to fund uh we like call them one-off projects, they're not reoccurring, right? Well, it hit us that, you know what? If we could spend the ARCA money on those this year, we can then save more in fund balance. So it just, it really, it prolongs how long we're gonna be able to keep the taxes stable. It's gonna go well past all of us sitting here, where with good planning and good budgets, year in and year out, it's gonna be stable, you're not gonna wake up one day and have to you know, pay another twenty-five percent in taxes, you know. Um we keep it stable, we keep it uh uh slowly, slow climb. Again, you know, twenty-four dollars a year. But I just wanted to hit on that because you touched on that, how we we used it for one-offs, just wanted to explain that typically, we would use fund balance for those. We'll get this one, we don't have to use as much fund balance this year because of the ARCA money, and that's all. So, thanks.
Okay, um just want to add on um the town has been good in getting funds from the state. And the relationship the town has established with our state representatives and our colony. And it's always good to have those relationships because it it helps when you need fund. All these things we've been doing in the town, and you can see in the presentation, all the grants um that town has gotten over the last couple of years, so so it was good to build and group things, you know, the state money and the federal. That being said, I make a motion.
Can I just add one thing? Thank you. Just uh and one of the other things that will contribute to the stability uh that we have in in this year's budget, the twenty twenty-four budget and budgets coming up after that is working um with our labor unions. We've settled three of the four union contracts, and the board has all done a good job with that. Working in cooperation with the unions, and see one of our union presidents here this evening. Everyone is working good faith. We have contracts that are gonna continue for the next couple of years. Uh we have one more to go, which we're currently working on. Uh and we hope to have that resolved before the end of the year, if we can. And knowing what the expenses are and knowing what the salaries are gonna be for our union employees, and the majority of the town uh are union employees, the civil service union and the PVA, uh that also helps the town with their projections and keeps things on a stable basis. So we're in pretty good shape with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And to add to that, um hold on, what I've been first time in twenty years that Tom Walco has all unions in contract. So um I take a lot of pride in that, as I was a union member for one time, so with that being said, motion to adjourn, um motion to close the public hearing. Sorry. I want to pay her. Alright, thank you. Next, we have Tom. Now, it's what he, he's going to give us a moment in the history of the town of Walco.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tom Nigiri, town historian with Assistant June Van Der Sheen. Uh she is also the unofficial historian for Circumeral. Together, we research and develop facts for the town's open-air plane museum on Van Burenville Road between Andrasia Road and Bowser Road in the neighborhood of Dogwood Acres, one, on seventeen N. We recognize people who contributed to the growth of the town of Walco. Back in the day, growth was mainly due to farming, especially dairy farming for milk and butter. And we believe, and believe it or not, other items were made with hemp cannabis. Now, not the marijuana cannabis, they are not, but clearly two distinct separate plants. Hemp was used to make rope, straw hats, and canvas. By the way, the the name cannabis comes from the word cannabis. Uh and from cannabis. Now, just one little thing, just talking about the budget and the increase of the prices. Just this afternoon, we were looking at an ad for nineteen thirty-one. A whole loaf of eighteen-ounce fried bread costs seven cents for the whole loaf. There you go. I almost remembered it. My points are close. Now, one of the recognized persons who I knew was none other than Irving Colvin. Irving Colvin, Herb as he was known, born October ninth, nineteen twelve. And this went to July ninth, nineteen eighty-seven. Married Margaret T. Adamus Colvin. Herb was sometimes an excitable kind of guy, with a devilish little laugh, as I know. On a big smile. He walked with a slight limp. Uh we'll talk about that later. Nineteen twenty, she was a lifeguard. Nineteen thirty, she worked on Wall Street as a stockbroker. He broke his hip when he fell in an elevator. Yes, he got his brokerage fixed up. Uh this caused him to be classified for a, by a job for nineteen forty, World War Two broke out, war broke out. Herb quit Wall Street and worked for a defense plant as a sheet miller man building airplanes. Think that gives him that from status, because he had that limp. Nineteen forty-five, after the war, he worked on Wall Street Stock Exchange in Manhattan, New York City during the early nineteen seventy. In nineteen fifty-seven, Herb moved to Forever Drive in Towne, Washington. He became involved in the sound flash. He was a head tenant at County National Bank. Nineteen sixty, he joined the Mechanics' Sound Fire Department and he became chief. He taught investment banking in Orange County Community College. He became an avid stock car racing fan, speedway in Orange County Turnaround. Nineteen sixty-one, he worked for Penn Stock Company as a stockbroker. There we go, war broke. Nineteen sixty-three, he was chief of Mechanics' Sound Fire Department. Herb was at the scene of a bad car accident on Route eighty-four, which is now two-eleven, not the interstate area. Uh uh didn't drive, when he suffered a severe heart attack. Thankfully, he survived, and was later fired from his job at Penn Stock. Not to be turned, he went to work for Congressman Ben Gilman, who at the time was a New York State Assemblyman. Ben convinced Herb to run for Pamblor for the town of Walco, of course. Ben supported him all the way. In nineteen sixty-seven, Urban won. Town clerk's office was at Certified Drive and Route eighty-four, which is now two-eleven, across from the old Lloyd's store and supermarket, for those that can remember that far back. In nineteen sixty-six, a town hall was built at six hundred up to eleven east, now the site of a hotel. Urban served as town clerk for seventeen years and retired in nineteen eighty-two. Now, for the next item, in regards to our upcoming preparation for the county that countries, Sammy Quinn Santen, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the American Revolution, which is gonna be celebrated in twenty twenty-six. We have uncovered some lesser-known facts about our country in regard to famous ladies. Open that up.
There she is.
Now, is there anybody here that looks at that? No, Statue of Liberty. Okay, good. No hands on that, so we're okay there. Good, Statue of Liberty is about a hundred and fifty feet tall. She stands on a pedestal a hundred and fifty feet high, for a total of about three hundred and five feet. She is holding a book titled The Declaration of Independence, seventeen seventy-six. Not like the Bible or something that a lot of other people, they shouldn't have known. That is what liberty is all about. The American Revolution against King George III of England, and the French Revolution against King Louis XVI. Uh the fact that was evolved and separated, which most people remember is give me your pirate, and it goes on. That was added in nineteen oh-three. It is located outside the pedestal at the bottom, um not at the bottom, but that is about immigration and less to do with independence. But did you know Statue of Liberty has three sisters? You gotta be a little strict, guys. I'm sorry, you guys can see through you.
That's smart.
Get ready for that.
Okay, now we'll go to number two. One of them you've seen on TV at least once a month. She's in Washington DC, District of Columbia. Keep the name Columbia in mind. She rests on a pedestal on top of the Capitol building, known as Lady Freedom. She's only twenty feet tall, stands on a twenty-foot pedestal, and weighs fifteen thousand pounds, made of solid brass. You may not recognize her, but look at the Capitol building in a picture on our television. Okay, then, there's the lady you've seen operating credit on some movies. She's Lady Columbia, the Gem of the Ocean. Her name comes from the American Revolution, Revolution, Columbia, in the civilization of Columbus, yeah. Columbia.
That's the female version of Columbus, Columbia.
Christopher Columbus, the guy.
Now, Columbia, think of Washington DC, District of Columbia, was the ultimate name from the American colonies during the American Revolution. There is some dispute as to who discovered America, called the New World. It included North America, Central America, South America, and the islands of Cuba, Haiti, and the Bahamas. For Christopher Columbus, landed in fourteen ninety-two, and America Old Vespuches landed in fourteen ninety-seven. So, America Vespuches got a mapmaker before it got through a mapmaker before Columbus. The mapmaker combined North, Central, South America and the island, known as the New World, and called it America. That's why we don't have Columbus as a country. Albusel, he got credit for the term pre-Columbian for anything before Columbus discovered anything else. Now, there is one more lady I'm sure you all know. But I'm not quite sure how she fits in. I'm a little reluctant to show her the picture, but not for the reason you may think. So here we go. That's Lady Gaga. You probably all know her. They have a lineup in place. See what they do. And it was not fine, I did not check them. Oh, oh, white work. And any, doesn't anybody know how Columbus splendid its exploration? Well, he used his discoverer.
I'm gonna stand down there.
Is it working?
Yeah.
Um, we haven't had them. I had another two weeks. And, um. We've had some good conversations over the last year. And we've created a great partnership. And this is what community is all about. Going out there, creating these partnerships for the betterment. Everyone in our community, no matter where you at. And I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to go to the celebration where. This young man Bishop J. Dave Rollins Senior was recognized for being bishop. Uh, with eleven years at Tabernacle Church. It was a great experience, so much that if I wasn't so shy, I would start dancing. It was a great time. Um, thank you for inviting me. Um, thank you, um, for letting us be part of it, um, to his wife, Miss Rollins. You did a great job. We had a great time. And I just felt that, you know, what he's done for the town. Um, he's been good, helped us with our Kwanzaa, a Juneteenth event, and we wanted to recognize. That he's been a great partner to the town. Um, helping me and my team, um, creating these events and making good. And through that partnership, he's also brought other individuals in who are also, have also partnered with the town. And help us create these events, we showed our diversity. Um, without further ado, Bishop Rollins, you want to come up? He never told the words. It liked us. He had that, that which, you know, I would like, like to say a couple of words. You know, when Barry White passed away, we liked him so.
Good evening to each and every one of you. Um, before I say anything, I, I know. It is truly an honor on behalf of. The Tabernacle. Our church is where the word of God is preached. That's why the power of God is built. The spirit of God is manifest, where the love of God is revealed, where the union with God is forsaken. Our theme is that we are not just. All of the members that are here, for the community, for our pastors in, in Walkeville. Uh, it is a concerted effort. Children in our school district, thank you so much Pastor Bart. Your encouraging words even tonight, we serve in regular little town, we get council together. Uh, recognizing, we talk about Kwanzaa, we talk about Hanukkah, we talk about Juneteenth. And I have to say to supervisors surrounding the entire Town of Walkeville. It has been a joy to join forces to recognize the changing of our times. But how they allow us to all work together for the betterment of everyone. I could not do it though, and I won't do it. I'm gonna ask somebody to please hold the, the phone for that lady earlier. Because I won't make the mistake of saying behind every great man, there's a great woman. For forty-seven years. For forty-seven years, she was my high school sweetheart. And she's still my sweetheart. She stands really big. As we, she is our co-pastor. And she stands with me as we work to make sure. That there are no barriers in our communities and that whatever we can do and whenever we can do it. We are here, we are the Tabernacle. We thank God for the Town of Walkeville and all of the residents. God bless you all.
Except over, um, I, I think it's a creative idea. The town to recognize our leaders and our community leaders and techniques. As the community moved in the right direction. Next, we have public participation on agenda item knowing, uh, three minutes, we want to move. Stitching in. Anyone from the audience? And. On agenda item down. Okay, that being said, we move on. Okay, we move on to Madam Clerk, you got some correspondings?
We do have a lot of emails here tonight. Uh, the first one is Janet School, who is one of the elders of discussion at the Church. And she is thankful to Mr. Padon and his staff. Um, they had some drainage issues there and she reported it to Mr. Brassier and, um. Where they went out and they addressed her drainage issues there, so that was taken care of. We have another, um, thank you from, I believe his first name is Ganesh. Who is in, um, the gentleman for the granite panels. As, um, the veterans part, the granite panels were put in place, um, last week. And this gentleman, I believe, is the installer of the panels. And he just would like to say that he was there on Wednesday and Thursday. He met with Louis J. Um, he also got to meet Mike Larry in the Veterans Group, it was a pleasant experience. Everyone was, was nice and accommodating. He was moved to see Mike's emotions after we set the last bomb. He said, this is the culmination of twenty-two years of work, for work. For me, this made all of the hard work worth it. And that is from Ganesh, who is the installer of that, those granite panels. Um, we have a, another email from, um. Mr. Ebrassino, and he is thankful for the. Moratorium that was put in place along the Shawangam Kill. And he, he goes at length to tell us why he's so happy, um, with that. Um, we had one from. Another Shawangam Kill area resident, um, Joy Foster. And she again, um, is grateful that we have, um. That we now own the Corning's campground and that the Shawangam Killers is being preserved. She's a longtime resident of that area. Also one from. Joseph Rivera, who again, um, is another fourth one resident who is grateful, um. There was that manner that went out regarding the Shawangam Kill moratorium, and these are all, um, thank you for these folks. Um, this lady, um, just writing to say thank you, thank you for the measure you put in place to preserve. The land around the Shawangam Kill, it's unbelievably important. And sadness me profoundly that anyone would realize, not realize the importance of this, and she's thankful, um, for that. Another one from Joanne Atlas, who, um, I believe is spoke to her councilman, Mr. Johnson. And she again is grateful for the Shawangam from moratorium. And then we were presented a petition from residents of the Baker Road area. And they are, um, concerned about any changes in zoning on Baker Road. And they presented a petition with. Probably about twenty signatures that will put on file in the clerk's office. And I'll forward this along to the board members, so, um, you will have that. And it's gonna be included in our records this evening, along with the thankness.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I consult the resolutions?
Okay, resolution in Town Board of Town of Walkeville approving the benefit assessment role. For the year twenty twenty-four, therefore hereby resolved, that the Town Board hereby approves the benefit assessment role for the year twenty twenty-four. Presently on file with the Office of the Town and Clerk, and the Town Clerk is hereby directed. To forward the benefit assessment role to the Office of the Town and Session without amendment or modification. We have a motion.
So move. Okay.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution in Town Board of Town of Walkeville approving the town water and sewer rate for this year twenty twenty-four. Resolve that January one twenty-four, the following water and sewage rates, usage rates. For properties within and outside the boundaries of the town water and sewer district should take effect. Water in district, three dollars per thousand, water out of district, six dollars per thousand. Sewer in district, three dollars and twenty-seven per thousand. Sewer out of district, six dollars and forty cents per gallon. Resolve Commissioner Public Work is hereby directed to notify all appropriate Town Clerk and town officials. That the enforcement rates shall go into effect on January one twenty-four. For billing and identification purposes, for the result of Town Clerk. Is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of segregation increases to be given as defined by law. Any motion?
So.
Second? Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Resolution in the Town Board of Town of Walkeville appointing persons to position of part-time police dispatcher. Now therefore, we hereby resolve the Town Board of Town of Walkeville hereby appoints Eric P. Bellin and Jack Rikowski. To the position of a part-time dispatcher to serve in safe capacity in the Town of Walkeville Police Department. A veteran of public service, one to twenty-three, a salary of twenty-three dollars and eighty cents per hour. Provided that one, all background checks are satisfactorily completed. Two, all appropriate documentation is submitted and accepted by the Orange County Department of Human Rights Services, Civil Service Department, and motion.
So move. Second.
Mr. Coyne?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Thank you. I would go to Councilman comments, so with Councilman Meyer?
Of course. Always. Um. So I do also want to congratulate Commissioner Problems, um, an amazing achievement. Um, I hope to continue the diversity in town and continue the celebrations with you. Um, I think that, uh, inclusion, inclusivity, um, has always been a mantra of mine. Um, and, you know, that's something I would absolutely continue moving forward, um, you know, as Town Supervisor. Uh, so this is the last meeting before the election. And yes, there is a lot of information and misinformation out there. Uh, I have continued to try to stick with the issues of the town and not get caught up in the finance service that revolves around us. Uh, the town has failed to risk assessment. A financial risk assessment is an evaluation of the probability of error in statement or fraud within your bookkeeping and finances. The New York State Comptroller's Office indicated last year that after their risk assessment last summer. That the financial reports were not accurate and could not be relied upon to make a sound decision. They engaged the town in what, of three areas, payroll, procurement, and financial management. And have been auditing the town now for the past sixteen-plus months. Although the town has not issued a written report yet. There were some concerning issues that the town was made aware of. No fixed asset inventory in the last five years, lack of segregation duties, a lack of policies and procedures. And the town not following its own procurement policy and numerous payroll issues that have continued to this day. The lack of controls and oversight are clearly prevalent in not only the errors in payroll. Which the taxpayer will ultimately be responsible for, but within the budget where the town has any quote books. For twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. These problems need to be corrected and there needs to be more board reporting, more transparency to restore confidence in the town's record. At the end of the day, this is your money and it's not being managed properly. You can't do a long-term plan if your finances aren't in order and you are behind. The supervisor on board need to start taking town finances seriously and fix these seven problems. It also needs to set a proper tone from the top of accountability and responsibility instead of maintaining the status quo. This includes creating policies and procedures and internal control environment that ensures the safety and security of town's assets and resources. Early voting will start on Saturday and go through November fifth, and the election day is Tuesday, November seventh. Make sure you go out and vote. I also wanted to mention that I, that I am wearing a blue lapel pin. Which signifies an end to Jewish hate. Or the end of antisemitism and, and all of our communities. It is now also worn in support of Israel and our ongoing struggle against the mass terrorism. I want to thank everybody. Wish everybody well in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you Supervisor. I will start with the Building Department. I just want to say that last one, I was at my day job and could not attend the meetings, so I apologize. I just want to give some quick updates from August as well as September for the Building Department. So, the month of August, they issued two-hundred-and-seven permits. Um, hundred-and-fifty-one certificates of occupancy and completion. Total fees collected were two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand and thirty-three dollars. Addressed fifty-eight complaints and carried out one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-nine inspections. For the month of September, hundred-and-thirty-three permits, hundred-and-ten certificates. Total fees were two thousand, two-hundred-and-three thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Addressed forty complaints and carried out nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine inspections. Water and sewer. Again, quickly for September, um. There were three water main leaks, three service leaks in the town. And as always, a great job by the department repairing those with very minimal downtime. The rehabilitation of the inward water storage tank is underway. The Rikowski Water Treatment Plant filters, um, are underway. And once those are complete, that will move on to the tower drive tanks. The Rikowski Well Expansion Project is still ongoing. Um, they're still finished with the first phase. And again, this is a much-needed project that will add additional wells to our well service. So in summertime, when we have high demand for water and hasn't rained on them like this summer, um, we'll have plenty of water for the residents in the future. And this goes back to good planning, like we mentioned before, for the water and sewer rates. And looking at projects like this and recognizing what we need to do moving forward, this is exactly what I'm talking about. This is something we, this board realized, hey, we should probably look for additional water sources, let's jump on there, even though we didn't really need it yet. Um, the wastewater treatment project, the F A project is slow-moving simply from supply chain shortages. Um, but we're hoping that that moves along within the next month at a much faster rate. The parts have been ordered, and again, um, they're just not trickling in yet. The department is working with contractors on larger projects to make sure no infrastructure is damaged when those projects move forward in the town. The D E C, the annual inspection of the wastewater treatment plant had a great report. That demonstrates the hard work by everybody in that facility to keep it in compliance and within regulations. The quarterly water bill may be delayed due to issues with the building software, um, but we're hoping that's corrected as soon as possible. The fault fire hydrant flushing that everybody loves so much was scheduled for the sixteenth to the twenty-ninth of October. Um, town-owned hydrants are usually flushed first for the privately owned ones, uh, anytime within that two-week period. In addition, this year we allow the fire departments to use the hydrant for training during that flushing time. Because as you know, when you move the water, you might get some discoloration in your water, but it does clear up quickly. For the month, uh, last one, for this month's, uh, meeting. For the month, last month, for this month's meeting, there were two water main breaks. They were repaired with no disruption in service, three service leaks and two water service leaks repaired by contractors. The water and sewer department had to replace two more fire hydrants that were identified as issues with flushing. And those upgrades and replacements will continue until the colder weather gets here. We can't really do that at that point. The town has completed their flushing again, but privately owned hydrants still could be flushed through this Sunday, the twenty-ninth, as well as the testing that the fire departments might do as well. So if you notice some discolored water, it will clear up. Don't panic. The department has been prepping for the annual health department inspection, which is scheduled for two weeks from now. The wastewater treatment plan, again, parts are ordered, they are in, so we're kind of hoping that gets rolling at a faster pace as soon as the syrup gets here. And as always, the operation maintenance is twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So it's a great job by everyone in that department to make that all happen. I would just like to say congratulations to Bishop James Brown. Every time he speaks, I think I'm looking at James Earl Jones. I kind of feel like, wow, I can listen to that voice all day long, no matter what he's saying. It's like I'm captivated. So I just want to say congratulations. Great job. We appreciate all you've done for the town and everything you do for the residents. So I just have to say that. I would like to point out that very shortly is Halloween. So you want to make sure that, you know, your little trick-or-treaters are safe when you're out there. People are driving, candy's out there, there might be some creepers, as people know, so do your best to make sure everybody is safe. And the night before, the Mrs. Night, you know, keep those kids in, let them know that there's a curfew and they're going to have to do what they have to do to get through that holiday. And don't send them to school as a teacher with all that candy the next day because they are bouncing off the walls. Daylight Savings, that ends November fifth for our next meeting, so remember you have to set your clocks back. That's, I think, Sunday, election day is the seventh. Very important to get out and vote. I mean, this is a year when there's no real big elections out there, but more importantly, your local leaders are the ones that have the biggest direct effect on your life and what you do in your town and, you know, everything around you. So it's very important to vote and be well-educated. You know, don't vote party lines if at all you can help that. Understand who their constituents are and what their background is, you know, what they might do for you moving forward. And, you know, why they should be elected to represent you, because that's, again, that's what we do up here, to represent the town. Veterans Day, November eleventh, very important. I hope to see everyone at our ceremony. I know it's Saturday this year, so I believe the holiday is going to be celebrated on Friday, the tenth. But, you know, everything you have and everything you appreciate is because of veterans. So remember, beat them at this country experiences and why everybody wants to come here and live here because the American dream is real and it can be achieved with hard work and dedication. And that's because our veterans have made it that way. Whenever we're challenged, whenever there's something that, you know, another country doesn't like about the way we go about life, it's our veterans that stop that from coming here, you know, allowing us to prosper and do what we do. So I say every day is Veterans Day. If you ever see a veteran, thank them. Thank them for their service. Buy them a cup of coffee. If you're in a restaurant and you see them in the corner, pay their bill and don't say anything. Just walk out. I mean, it's the nicest thing you can do because of all the sacrifices they made for us. So it's very important. And that's it. Thank you.
And Councilman Johnson, Councilman Coyne?
Okay, I'll start with highway. Again, we're ending the paving season, so another road or two is left to be paved, but will be complete shortly. We move on to fall and leaf pickup. Leaf pickup begins November thirteenth. It's broken into four weeks. So if you want to go on to the town website and find out when your street will be, when the guys will be coming down to pick up your leaves, you can see online. One thing I want to remind everybody, though, if you're in the sewer district, then you get leave pickup. So if you have, you know, septic and well, about like where I live, they're not coming to get my leaves. They're not coming to get yours either. So if you're in the sewer district, again, go take a peek at the, at the schedule. And this is always asked as well. If they have time and it's smooth and it doesn't rain, which I don't say about that, right? If they have time, they will go back again. But only if they have time. Don't rely on it. Know when your street is up. Get your leaves down to the curb and make sure we get rid of those. Veterans Affairs, so November eleventh, Veterans Day at eleven o'clock, eleven, eleven, and eleven. Post eleven eighty-one will be having their ceremony at the Elks Club. And Post one fifty-one is also having a ceremony at their post on Wayway on the Avenue. Please attend one of them. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not a somber occasion, right? Like Memorial Day. I always said the two should be switched because Memorial Day we're barbecuing and drinking beer. And it should be a funeral-like atmosphere as opposed to Veterans Day where, you know, that's maybe when you should be barbecuing and drinking beer. But in any event, attend the service, pick one. They're both great. They both do a great job, Post eleven eighty-one and one fifty-one. They always have good speakers. And I want to talk about the wall. Louise, I brought up the letter from the gentleman who installed the panels. We had twelve sections installed. Thanks to Senator Scoofus, Assemblywoman Gunther, George, and the board, we're able to use grant money to get twelve sections delivered and installed. Another one was installed today, this morning, from another, this is what the committee raised the money for. And the last piece, the last piece is, I don't know if it's still in India or is it in the Atlantic yet? I don't know. Yeah, like it's got to go to Vermont though, right? So, yeah, I don't know exactly where it is, but it's somewhere between India and Vermont, you know. Yeah, so it's, it will be installed in April. And that's it. The wall is finished. And, you know, that gentleman brought up, looking at Mike's face, I took my lunch break to make sure to go to Maddie's diner that day when they were installing the twelve, oh, one of the days that they were installing. And yeah, I mean, you had to see Mike standing there. I mean, he was, he was like in shock. You know, because it's been twenty-six, twenty-seven years where he started that. And the amount of people that came before us, and Larry's here with his white Rosie, you know, the amount of people that came before us to try to help raise money. You know, a handful have passed away, a handful just get burnt out. It's a lot of work trying to raise money. But so many people have had a hand in this. And it's just about done. I mean, it's right around the corner. Come April, we're going to have a big ceremony. We were talking about doing one for the, for the twelve pieces and now thirteen pieces, but you know what? We're so close. We're so close. Why don't we hold off until spring and, you know, close both sides of that road? And have a big ceremony and, and say to our Vietnam vets, welcome home, you know, properly. So I look forward to that and it's been a long time coming. Comments? Bishop Brown, congratulations. Thank you for all you do for our community. Halloween was mentioned. Yeah, keep the kids safe. Also, you know, for the adults, you know, and I know we all may not drive thirty miles an hour. Well, on that Tuesday, you know, make it your business to slow down. Have the eyes going back and forth, scanning across the road. Let's, let's be safe out there. And yes, November seventh is election day. Hope everybody gets out to vote. And that's really, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Valentine?
Okay, just, just some short things from the parks department. They're halfway done adding safety servicing to the playground around our parks and they're hoping to finish this week. They A-rated the soccer fields. We're coming up to our annual college showcase where one weekend we host college-bound kids in these tournaments and we fill the, the fields with college coaches looking to recruit and hopefully recruit some of our kids to these programs who've been very successful. And the town participates in it, gains from it because our hotels and restaurants are full for those weekends. One full weekend is dedicated to the boys and one full weekend is dedicated to the girls. We have new playground equipment that just arrived at Circleville Park and will be moving, will be moving the old setup and setting up the new equipment this coming week. And you heard we have a new paperball court at our Stevens Avenue park. Along those lines, you've heard about our Halloween. Yes, it's Halloween. I'll let the chief talk about the curfew that we typically put in from Halloween. The night before Halloween and going through the night, and so I'll let him speak on that. As far as our police, the department currently has fifty-four full-time police officers. Six of the officers are pending. The police academy will be graduating early next year. Police Community Council on October fifth, the Police Community Council hoped that a well-tended forum on the police response to cases involving those in having a mental health crisis. The chief moderated the well-tended event and the participants, participants included Orange County District Attorney Data Kubler, Orange County Commissioner of Social Services Mental Health, Commissioner Dossie Miller, Anun Sanacy, President of Orange County National Alliance on the Mental Health Illness, and Laura Altieri from the Access Support Board for Living. The next meeting will be at seven P M on Thursday, November second, at the community center. For those of you that don't know, just not too long ago, we entered into a program thanks to the chief and supervisor Serrano to bring it to the board and to our police department in our community where we now have onsite two individuals, two professional individuals that deal with mental health. And so they're assigned to the police department. We know, watching TV and the news, the horrible things that happen, unfortunately, when we're dealing with incidents that involve those that deal, you know, with mental health and hopefully, and our police officers, that they're not trained to deal with everything that's out there. And so especially with this. And so our hope size that these folks are now available to our police officers, our police department, and everything is at no cost to the town, including the car that they drive. And so Chief, if you want to extend on that, it's an excellent program. And the advantage there is there's no cost to the town, but at the same time, our police officers see this and hopefully gain and train from it. And those that have that condition also help in a better way and handled in a better way. From the Police Youth Coalition, on October seventeenth, the Police Youth Coalition hosted their annual award ceremony at the community center during the event. Youth leaders and community partners were recognized for their contributions during the past year. Their next meeting will be seven P M on Tuesday, November twenty-first, at the community center. And Rosie, our host of hostage, back there, I can tell you that room was filled. That room was filled to the top and parents, kids, and everything else. And I say this all the time when we speak about our youth program and our youth. You know, the world is crazy these days. I personally think social media is, is, it's just terrible. There's no editing, no matter what age you are, no matter what you're doing, people are allowed to say whatever they want and it's, it's not monitored and it affects our kids in the schools. We have, we, you know, congratulations and to those schools that have been able to, as kids walk into the school, they take their cell phone. No cell phones during the day at school unless there's an emergency. I know Little Town is doing that. There's other schools that have done it, but Rosie and the program, they do a fantastic job. If you want to change the world, it starts there. It starts with these young people. And I say that our kids are youth, it's God's message saying there's still hope in the world. So touch them early, get to them early, work with them early, and you'll be surprised what comes out of it. So thank you, Rosie and the program. On, on, on a not-so-good note, on October tenth, Detective Dane Wakefield arrested a second suspect in connection with the October twenty murder of Mr. Jeffrey Harris. The second, the second suspect, a twenty-five-year-old resident, the defendant was arrested after the investigation disclosed he paid previously arrested defendant to murder Mr. Harris. So great work from our police department, great work from Detective Dane Wakefield. And this just adds to the need of, of the growth in our department. Our town is growing. We're seeing things in the town that twenty years we didn't see. And unfortunately, growth is great and smart growth is great. But with growth comes other things that, that we need to identify early and address early. And we do that by, by a better, well-trained police department, a better, well-trained society to deal with these things. The accreditation update, which is to the police department this week, the state assessors are conducting a pre-audit in advance of full audit on December fifth, sixth, and seventh. During the pre-audit, the assessors are reviewing four percent of the policies and forms, pages ten of two hundred and forty-eight that will be inspected during the full audit. So for those of you that are not aware of this, we entered into accreditation program with our police department, which raises the bar. But our individual raises the bar for the department and for us to support that. And so the audit will happen on December fifth and we'll see where it goes from there. Thank you, Chief, and the whole department for taking care of that and running with it. Talk about the Truck or Treat is tomorrow here. Walk it free. Come and enjoy. Bring your kids. It's from four to six. It's a great showing. We're going to have fantastic weather, so take advantage of it. Congratulations to my friend, to our friend, Bishop Rollins. How many years have I known you? And, you know, it's just a positive message, a positive note that he sends out to everyone. And I like to think, since, since my day of coming a councilman, I've never felt any indifference in the town or within our town. I like to believe and I know that our town is doing a work, you know, it's colorful. And, and we treat everybody equally. We treat everybody the same and we grow in that and it's good growth. So thank you, everyone. I think that's about it.
I'm just getting like, I'll keep my comments brief. First, I want to thank Cheryl and Lauren, people that helped me with the budget and getting to where we are today. Thank you very much and to your account staff. In regards to the account staff, we have a full staff there now. We have, we have seventy employees. First of all, as we only had two or four. So they're doing good. They've been there. The majority of them have been there three months. They're learning and it's, it's, they're learning good and they're moving forward, moving. Regarding pickleball, I'm looking forward to have, go up there to pickleball. So when your arm gets better, we'll go up there and play, all right?
Oh, back in the room, you say, want to play with my arm like this?
Bishop Rollins, congratulations. Very well deserved. You've always been, this is a good friend to the town and I appreciate everything you do. I'm talking about some events that are coming up. Of course, a truck we have coming up tomorrow. And Councilman Vance has said it's going to be the weather four to six. Should be good. I'm still debating what I'm going to address on that, so should be good. One of the things, you know, we do is as soon as we heard the attack on Israel, we right away got in touch with all community members to try to help, to help Israel and whatever they need. So we started a collection and donation drive. We can drop off any non-purchasing goods, canned goods, first aid kits, tourniquets, anti-vaccine whips, wipes, hygiene products, socks, T-shirts, underwear, diapers. And we will work to get it to our brothers and sisters. And we will work to get it to um our brothers and sisters in Israel, so that's a big thing. Um. We have our holiday parade scheduled for November twenty-fifth. Um, starting um by all being waved by the bank on the town trust. So if people want to come and join us, it's always a good event. We're ended over there by Macy's. With the with the lighting of our Christmas tree, which we made partnership with Doorwood Acres Family Home who has so generously donated. We will have the the video then when they cut down the tree and bring it over. We should have anywhere from twenty-five, thirty-five from tree that's gonna go there. On Sunday eleven, we have the menorah lighting right here from Town Hall at six thirty P M. Then on December twenty-sixth, we have our Kwanzaa celebration at the community center. Everyone needs to go out and vote. It'll be great to go and vote. I don't believe that Town Hall meetings are political forums, so I'm not gonna get into politics with it. Um, go out and vote. Um, we have um approved the dial-a-bus on uh election day. Um, there are three, you know, four locations that dial-a-bu- dial-a-bus will pick up residents and take them to a voting uh location. And it won't charge. Now, that's a fixed route. If there is someone wants to go to a voting location and it's not one of the places where we're picking up, you can call the dial-a-bus and we'll pick you up and bring you back and not charge you. So um, it's on our website, it's a free service that Town is gonna provide to and from the voting location. Um, it's gonna operate from nine to three um with the fixed number. And then if you're calling up the dial-a-bus, that's from nine to five. Early voting starts on Saturday. The closest location for Town Hall residents is the City of Little Town Senior Center on sixty-two eighty uh West Main Street. Um, we have all the hours, uh nine to five, nine to five, um seven to eight, twelve to eight, um nine to five, seven to three, and then nine to five, the last two days. Um, in regards to the real of the war, the war, um, I take my bet very seriously. And when I took office, um, and Mike Cody, I I was asking, why can't you do this war? Why it's been so long that this man has been trying to get this war built and hasn't been done? And I made him a promise that we would let him die. And I did not anticipate that this would happen this quick. None none of us did. But again, like Councilman Co- when you said earlier, with the help of the seventy-one doctor and seventy-schooers, we made um his dream come true. I had the opportunity to go over there, watch him put one of the stones up and I was able to put a a bill underneath him to sign it and to see uh Mike Cody so happy. And then on Saturday, he had the opportunity to go to Washington in the honor of life. And I went there that morning to see him off. Um, he went with his daughter and it was just great to see uh this man and anyone who knows Mike Cody, to see his dream come true and it makes me feel good that um myself and Town Board is something that's meant, so um that's basically it. Everyone's been everyone's been pretty much saying, so.
Yeah, I just had one thing. I know that Councilman Coy mentioned it, our lead pickup starts in November thirteenth and um in in light of Commissioner Garcia uh is what he always said. You know, it's all subject to rain, it's all subject to the weather. And so you you go online, you see when you're you're expected to be picked up. If it doesn't happen, have patience. As Commissioner Garcia always says, it's just leave. So it's just leave and we'll get to that. Thank you.
Okay. I'll go.
Thank you. Um, as always, um, the Board of Elections and the Board of Election Inspectors. They're currently nine opening in Town Hall. Um, if you want to call Board of Elections, six, three, six, zero, sixty-five hundred. We even call our office, they provide training, the training is, I believe you get twenty-five dollars to attend training. And inspectors are paid three hundred dollars for the day. Um, it's a very important um job and a lot of the sites cannot open unless there are enough people. And like I said, there's quite a few of them in Long Island. I spoke with them today, so they're they're hopeful that um we'll be able to find some folks for them. Um, congratulations to the bishop. I'm not as old as Mr. Valentine, but I have um known the bishop also probably since the beginning of time. And he always follows when I say him. Um, we're getting this year participating in the Boys and Girls Call Giving Tree Project. Um, I don't know, I think this is like the tenth year that we've done that. The ornaments will be available on November sixth, Mrs. Coy, um, from the one of our greatest shoppers. Um, so I'm probably completing the straw room on people on beginning in uh November. Um, thank you to the Youth Coalition for including me at all the lodgris, um, a week ago. And like I said, that might I pale in comparison to what those folks do, what Rosie does, what the chief does. Um, but I certainly was honored, but those folks just no one really knows unless you know um what they do and Rosie, um, I don't know if she's still here, but I always ask her, when does she sleep? Because she's always got something, as I say, in the cooker. Um, so thank you again. Um. The November, December Town Board meetings have been, um, dates have been changed because of the holiday. The November meeting will be on November sixteenth and the December meeting um will be on December twenty-first. And just a quick um shout-out for my baby brother who um was, is um very involved in the Honor Flight. He recently was appointed to the Board of Directors. Um, he has a great passion for that program and he um he has been pestering Mike Cody for a number of years to go on the flight and Mike always told him no. And uh he finally got out of that, he said yes. And Lou said that it was just a fantastic day, they had great weather. And I think I told Mark this story when I got on the bus, Lou said there was, oh, you know, there's a bus leader. I don't know what that means. I mean, he gives out beads or something, I credit that. Um, but he told Mr. Cody that when we get to Washington DC, there are no questions asked. I won't use the word, but he said, your tail's going in a in a wheelchair. If we want you to be able to see everything, they put on the seat. And he said, Mike, at the end of the night was exhausted, but had just an amazing time. So congratulations to to Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, and your other question is is losing time would automatically defer to me or you? Okay, thank you. She Jim, congratulations, you're filling our, we'll go quick then, Jim, you're filling our meeting, congratulations. The recognition is well deserved, um, this is the earth in the serving. The Police Community Council, all that forum back on um just October fifth. We are suffering a crisis in our community with the the overwhelm, the overwhelming disaster. Now the elements need the increased rate of hospitalization, our office is not equipped, the background issues, Gary, social media intervention, um, drug use. The the crisis we're facing right now, we're once again overcooked. The partnership with the Walgreens on team has been great for our department. So far, they've had one hundred cases in a very short time, one year, and we're looking to defer all cases so that we just have to meet this with their leaders. And it's a test tube, it's an experiment with only agents who have the white plane to to adopt this program ever in the industry of New York State. And now that we've adopted it, and the stories I had about our successes, other agencies have reached out to the county and they want to adopt this program, but we haven't. And the conversation goes, they worry about it, potentially a second hard time at Town Hall. So it's a great success, it's a forward-thinking success. I think next year we have to do, look forward to people, I can bring this on sound like President Councilor tonight. Maybe I can guide you and and cyberbully, you could see so much of the talent, social media. And we have to find a better way forward on community service uh for residents. Rosie, congratulations on a great event last week. Um, it was wonderful and you know, you make a lot of use and make forum, I think we did something to deal with cyberbullying, bullying at the very least, others are made for, but you know, or Councilman Valentine talked about the murder of a higher arrest. This is a brutal vicious assault, run, brutal murders, I've seen in my career, certain run, brutal murders, I haven't seen here. Um, to to Mr. Harris, providing white family members, you know, we made the initial arrest in forty-eight hours. Vicious crime and people on this ring of words. There was a sentence, there was somebody else involved. And we committed to the standing that we arrest everyone involved and ten, eleven months, fifteen days later, a second arrest was made, it wasn't just our police department. Our county attorney's office, they lease our county sheriff's office, FBI, Secret Service, other federal authorities, the relative verification. Um, it could not have come to a better conclusion to bring a little bit of relief and justice to the victims and suffering through the whole, so this is fine, Mr. Harris. Accreditation update, so we're back um to still online. Less than twenty-five percent of the agency, they're credited, we're almost there and and on the down dimension, reading pre-audit, you're gonna be doing four percent of the work we've done so far, so good, and we'll be back on December fifth, sixth and seventh. Um, we're we're learning something new every day because of this process, but when we come out of it again in December, we're gonna be much more better represented, deal with every issue faced, because of the problems we have. Overnight parking, you know, it's seventy-four degrees, overnight parking is a fact, so uh when it's two inches of snow, it's not, it's seven eight weekend, and there's no overnight parking, you can probably handle it. Kirk can go YouTube, um, but first, we have a system for live scan. We don't use any fingerprints no more, other than events where we use fingers or children, the public safety. But we have a live signature, it's almost like a photo stamp, you can take suspect's fingerprint on. And this is critical for us because subsequent to bail reform, we have to release the poll on any occasion. And often times, we had a couple of cars on the campus failing. The town board was kind enough to advance us the money, in advance of a grant to purchase a machine, a bunch of equipment, and I'm happy to put that grant just in proof. So we're able to get equipment in, I will probably call seventy grand money, so it's gonna be, so thank you for that, thanks for the support. A lot of them, yeah, from the left that are serving the community. Almost a proposed budget now, the final budget for the kennel, for something that other than offer money, so that's absolutely necessary. Um, we had dogs coming all the time and many don't kill shelter in town, surrounding areas, so it's very difficult for us to turn over the dog to anyone. If you want to store it, sometimes it will be fine. So here, state regulators require that we update our housing account of the procedures and the shelter for the dog. And this will go a long way, I know it's quite a bit of money. Um, it's something a lot, it's not a regular kennel, the building has uh runs and being ability to be in all the necessary requirements of the board. The drone's gonna be a great asset for control. For large scale, there are things where two dangers send a long threat. We have a lot of light issues, we have crack rates and other companies where eventually something can happen, we're we're not gonna have offices going, we're not gonna expose our offices to danger unless someone's at risk of life. And we're probably not able to evaluate the situation, we're gonna buy a property and that's responded. So the drone will allow us to go in and dance, depending on present talent, you have to deploy it, scan it, and reach it after. And then lastly, um, the Council of Valentine, it's like a curfew, it's October thirty and thirty-first and eleven, eleven one. It's less than seventeen, right? Two hours, between eleven P M and sixteen, they're not allowed on the to to Councilman, responding Councilman, um, Eric Johnson's comments about you, there's really not a lot of criminal mischief anymore, still gonna be diligent, we still have active roles supporting. With the advent of social media, they've gotten away from naked cars, I'm not doing it on the Metaverse officially now, but we don't see a lot of that anymore. Views ago, when I first got here, we'd have to go to all the grocery stores and other vendors in town and tell them not to sell eggs and shavings. It doesn't really happen, but we don't see that, I don't know, very few now. And once again, I'll do video games on Facebook, whatever, what they're doing in Metaverse, so we see very few cases of criminal mischief, but we'll have active controls on during we will, I mean, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now we get to public participation, three minutes on any item.
Look, you're a natural. I had some time to think here. Um, all right, so my name's Connor Wilson, I'm the owner operator at Spoke Way Barbecue, it's food truck. Um, see many of your familiar faces, I was um lucky enough for uh the laws changed within town, I was able to obtain special permits um and set up and serve at a lot of the great festivals that you guys held, such as fireworks, two hundred and fifty, uh anniversary at Walkill and Community Day, so I want to thank you very much for that. Um, moving forward, it is my goal um to open up my own restaurant space within the Town Hall, I do see a future um here with you guys. And um just allowing me to operate my food truck is, you know, as a young entrepreneur, getting uh giving me a chance to get my feet wet, grow my business within the town, sell my services uh to the community, so um I can't thank you guys enough. Good luck with the restaurant. Yes, thank you very much. We're definitely working towards it, it's quicker than you think, so. Uh, Mr. Serrano, supervisor, uh, congratulations on all your accomplishments.
Thank you.
And uh my opinion with yours, I wish you the best in upcoming election.
Thank you very much and uh just uh it's been great.
Long lines speak for themselves, right?
Hi, good evening, Jean Shaw. I just wanted to um go over the master plan review committee is currently in progress, a review of the Town of Walkill. And on, I know the the board knows, but this committee is made up of volunteers from the town that have a vested interest in the future development of the town. And standardly, the town hires a consultant with expertise in master plan review. The master plan reviews on things such as if business opportunities are in appropriate places. Um, also, the the master plan usually stays in place for at least ten years and, you know, we should use an expert to guide the town through this process. Also, the duty of the master plan committee is to provide additional public meetings or access for all town on people, so they can include their recommendations just proactively before on the town board sees it, after the town board sees it, um. Perhaps I had an idea that we could leave documents in Town Hall, so people, the townspeople could easier access on the recommendations that are in progress and perhaps leave comments here. Um, so, you know, that's that's a wrap-up of my thoughts to make the master plan review committee successful. And uh I await your response to um hiring additional experts and uh being able to make um additional public access to them.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Moon. I'm a little nervous of my name, but I just wanted to come and say, um, I wanted to say once again, thank you and show my appreciation and I'm not gonna stop saying thank you for what you did to um Stavely. Um, I only have a year and three months that I moved here. And um I came to realize we had a flooding issue, drainage problem. And um uh the residents, they're like, oh, we have a long time dealing with it. I came to find out the town wasn't even aware of it. And when all this flooding would happen in July, that I was so desperate trying to reach out to anyone, I started Googling, I didn't even know who to call, honestly, I don't know anyone here, I don't have anyone. And then that was my out, I just had, just had bought the property. Um, for some reason, I know I came across, I reached out to many people here in the town, nobody answered. Mr. Serrano, I thank you so much, you answer me and he said I would have somebody there really. Honestly, I thought he's blind, somebody, I did. Ten minutes later, somebody was knocking on my door. And he knocked on my door just in time before the water was just about to come all the way in the, inside my house. All I was thinking was, I'm gonna lose everything I own. The only thing I have, I'm a single mom with two daughters. And I have put on my savings, but I'm like, I'm gonna lose everything. Ten minutes later, I had somebody knocking on my door. And after that, and I showed them all the videos of how the water was coming in for for all the residents there. And I must say, he said, we're gonna, we're gonna fix this. And I just kept thinking to myself, he, oh please, he's not gonna do anything. Three weeks later, I saw them, they thought it fixed me. Everything is resolved and I'm gonna say thank you again and I'm not gonna stop saying thank you. Thank you so much.
Very welcome. Welcome to Town of Walkill.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, Colonel, uh, Chief, I just wanted to mention to you, you mentioned the the client mischief stuff. I think that's a direct result of your guys and girls that are working in this. Uh, blessed with eight grandchildren, uh, five year old that goes to Circleville, two thirty year olds. And they talk about the officers there regularly, the two thirty year olds went to the junior face academy this last summer. So appreciate you and the board keeping that up, I think it's a great thing. I definitely think more than a week is, they they were, they were asking for more, so if, you know, maybe two weeks, I don't think they could do it all summer. But maybe two weeks would be great for that. But um just wanna let you know how many compliments you get versus complaints, but the folks you got at the stool, they're they're top notch.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Kirk. Anyone else in the audience?
Thanks. Um. That's not my address this time, right? Uh, mention, by the way, I don't care, I'm just here. I I, excuse me, sorry, all right, from there, like, two thousand two, and my theme song was I've got so much skin. So that's, that's it, and that's like, that's something, something. All right. Right. I had a quote from there. Are we ready on time, James taking the time, or I'm gonna, I'm sorry. And it was uh, when I saw corruption, I was forced to find the truth myself, because I couldn't swallow the hypocrisy. I want to tell you something.
Sir, just your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mitch. Um, these days, I'm going by J C Mitchell online because I got so many trolls after me, I gotta change my name. So the town of Walk Hill, Walk Hill troops is is the site. And they're trying to say that um Neil's um manager, which I am not, could you verify it? I am not in campaign, I'm like him, I have nothing to do with him, so that, I just wanted to let everyone know, nothing to do with that man. I like him, I ain't saying anything bad, it's not, but as far as done. Um, the last quote that I said before I left here, which I I paraphrased, but I'm gonna say it right now, says I, it's a bombshell quote that says, I still. Say that some of the biggest criminals are those that turn their heads away and when they see wrong and they know it's wrong. Back to Super Eight, no one's doing anything, Hup and Koo's, no one's doing anything, made many reports and nothing's going on. I've tagged everyone over the past year from D A Hooper, Newhouse, The Record, Spectrum News, Hudson Valley, Mid Hudson Valley News. Walk Hill Valley Times, Department of Health, Chamber of Commerce, Lays Gomez, yourself, too, OSHA. And I've been blocked with deleted more comments of anything there, so somebody's hiding something. Someone's doing something that's not right. But um, so now that the, one of my biggest problems between, last time with Sue was safety. I walk in here, anyone can walk in here, there's not, nothing here outside. There's a deadbolt on it, just saying, come on in, we're right here, being live stream. There's no metal detectors, anyone come here and do anything, what's happened the past two days? Okay, I don't feel safe here, I don't think anyone here should feel safe either. Is I, I think we really need some kind of protection in general, not, you know, just in general, because I don't feel safe here. I had a police officer escort me out when I was leaving, I felt safer then, because I didn't know what was gonna happen when I came here, who was gonna maybe attack me. So that's part of um, that's part of that, and I know there's a lawsuit going on here and uh with with some language and stuff like that, that that's going on here. I'm ready to start a lawsuit myself with um people defaming me online, putting myself together with uh Mr. Maya here, together, just nonsense, complete nonsense. So um, you're gonna give me a minute notice when I'm almost done?
So I can.
Twenty five seconds.
Say it again?
Twenty five seconds.
I got forty, but.
All right, okay, now you're you're talking about um the budget, incomplete information, the man's a C P A, he couldn't even go through it, but everyone had all their, the information, like, yeah, everything's good. Now, you're not responsible, as far as happening in owners, I've worked there, there's mold, they hide a mold there, but. We're not gonna say anything about that, that's another thing that I reported, everything's online, like you all know. So I can't say much much more about that, I just, you know, like I said, I think everyone's a criminal here. And not just straight up to look you all in the face like that, not true. I don't think they, this town deserves a good life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. I'm gonna say something. My name is Minister Nicole Bantra, who, um, I'm not a resident of Walk Hill, but I just wanted to say, Mr. Serrano. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Rosie, um, who helps us and includes us, even though I'm all the way on the other side of town. Um, I have an organization, it's a nonprofit, it stands that, which stands specifically A Boop's here. And Ms. Rosie, I've had the pleasure of working with her on several of her um. Events that she's done, um, what I would like to bring up, the hearing you speak in regards to um the mental health issues here is maybe partnering. With the chief and and as well as Walk Hill, um, I I advocate for a lot of kids in this state, in this county. And the biggest um thing that we're facing right now is we have no mental health resources. For children, they're being outsourced all the way as far as up to Schenectady and Fort Winds Bellevue Hospital. Um, there are no therapists, no um psychiatrist, psych doctors here. And the kids are not receiving the proper treatment here, because as I met with someone at Garnet, they told me there is not a need. When there's clearly a need, there are kids right now sitting in Garnet on psych holds for two weeks. Um, I also just had to advocate for a child that's seven years old who uh got returned back home because. The hospital that services your community and mine says there's no need. So I would love to get together. Thank you, Ms. Serrano, Mr. Serrano for helping us, thank you for honoring my bishop, and just thank you for making us who come from Middletown here feel welcome, so.
One. Thank you, what you do, I appreciate.
Evening, everyone. Um, this is my first meeting. Uh, my name is Earl Smith. I just moved here uh almost three years now, walking. And I have to say, this is one of the best decisions I've ever made in uh purchasing a home, this facility. I just want to thank you for all the good information that you have brought to me, uh, what's going on in the community. And I'll be looking forward to come to the next meeting and I'm glad I came.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome to Walk Hill. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience?
Good evening, Antonio Rendondo. Good evening, guys, how you doing today?
Hi.
All right, uh, so uh first and foremost, I want to thank all of you guys, uh, for all the work you guys have done over the past couple of years. Um, I know that, you know, I know what the job entails and uh you guys have done a wonderful job. Chief, I just want to extend my thank you to you too, uh, we had this discussion a couple of days ago. Uh, about the murder that took place on my street, and uh I just want to commend you, uh, the police department, and all the enforcement agencies for um, you know. Taking care of that and removing those animals from this area. Uh, Mr. Point, I heard you mention before, you were talking about the paving that was going on, and I I realized that um. Our uh D P W has been doing that, and it's been going on probably for a year or two, right?
Yeah, well, we bought a paper, we used to, we used to uh. You know, curse, I have a better term. Uh, source it out to uh somebody else and have to rely on their schedule, basically, so.
Well, so I I, you know, I've seen a lot of the work that our D P W guys have been doing. Um, you know, I just want to express my thank you to them, I see that they're doing great work and I was uh very impressed with the work that they're doing. And I think it's uh more to the benefit of the town to always look to have our people do it rather than contract it out. And um, last but not least, I just want to thank all of the town employees, because as you guys know. All the town employees, they are the people that run this town, and they do fabulous shopping, thank you.
Thank you, Antonio. For those of you that don't know him, uh, Antonio is a prior councilman.
Yep.
So he served the town for many years and and did a great job for.
Anyone else? Well, it's been a long evening, thanks everyone for coming, I appreciate. Motion to adjourn.